All right. Welcome to this July 22 regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabano.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of June 12th, 17th, 18th, 19th, and July 10th.
So moved.
We're going to separate them all out, right?
For voting?
But you'll all record it as, you know, for each meeting, so.
Right.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes, for most. I have to abstain from the June 18 closed, and we didn't have a discussion. I was going to ask that on the 6:19 one that you change arrival time, that's all. It was 6:45 for.
It's, I already changed it. For you and Vice President Mordecai, yes.
And on the open comments on 7:10, I'm going to say for that one, no, because we didn't get to review the comments before they were made. On everything else, yes. So I'm abstaining on 6:18 because I wasn't there.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
I'm abstaining on June 18th, as I was not there for the disciplinary hearing. And also, I am voting no on the comments, in particular on the July 10th meeting, as I disagree with the comments in whole and in part, as discussed earlier with the president. And my vote is yes for the others.
President Alper?
Yes.
Dr. Cascon?
So, good evening, the board.
Got to have her closer to you.
Got it. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, members of the West Orange Public School community. As you know, today's my first board meeting, and I just want to again thank the board and thank the community for the opportunity. It's been a busy first week on the job. My first priority in chair was, as we have a number of summer programs which are in operation, was to get to those programs. It was an excellent opportunity to visit with and interact with some of our staff and a number of our students, in addition to just kind of a practical consideration of seeing how those programs run, assessing the various procedures, not the least of which, security procedures, but really having an opportunity to, you know, be able to have a perspective in order to kind of work with those staff moving forward and any kind of adjustments might need to be made to those programs, because, of course, if I miss them this year, then they're on tap again for next year. I will tell you that we have some tremendous programs here. We are servicing over 900 students through our programs, involving over 200 staff members. And I would like to commend, really, the tremendous staff that I saw working with the students during the summer, as well as the various program coordinators. We, of course, offer a wonderful summer enrichment program at the high school, extended school year programs, a summer institute credit recovery at West Orange High School, and a step up program, which is a voluntary program for students who are rising up into high school, to get them prepared. And I have to say, the staff and the children were fantastic. I mean, they were wonderful to me, very respectful, and I was, I was super impressed by that. On another note, I just want to speak to an opportunity I had last Friday. I was honored to be invited to a scholarship award ceremony by the Circle of Rainbow Sisters, otherwise known as COR, and the mission of that organization, amongst other things, is to, really to build understanding about financial literacy amongst our young folks. And certainly, when you look at the status of, the financial status of our country from a debt standpoint, whether it be our national deficit, or credit card debt, or personal debt, or college debt, it is a tremendously valuable mission. And I was thankful to Ms. Brown, who was the president and the other board members, for the invitation. I had the, the privilege of also interacting with some of our partners in East Orange and South Orange, and I was tremendously inspired by their passion for that mission, as well as some of the wonderful song that took place at that, at that ceremony. But finally, I'd just like to commend the two West Orange recipients, which was Inoka Jones and Brian Balthasar, both of whom I believe have graduated. Inoka is going on Howard, and Brian is going on NJIT. And I was tremendously impressed by all the young people that I met at that, so mature, so composed, and also very, very nicely congratulating me on the new role. So, a good first week, a good balance of time on task, of getting in and being visible amongst the buildings, and doing a lot of active learning. So, again, thank you to the board, and I look forward to the reports ahead.
Right. Looks like I still have to do.
I will get better at this. So, I do have HIB reports, which I will circulate to the board at this time. Board secretary, one for the record. So, you know, keeping with the, the pre-existing kind of organizational method here and indexing, you can see 103 through 108, 108 are those which are on the agenda for, for this evening. And are there any questions?
See, all Gregory. Was there any, I don't know, was there anything in terms of trend or consistent theme, or is it just all part of the same?
It's all the same incident.
It's all the same incident, okay.
Yeah. So, you know, oftentimes, you know, there are, you know, multiple, because of the way the investigation's conducted, it's kind of teased out into different, different numbers.
Right, when it's the same incident, right, right, right.
Correct, correct. But I will tell you, Mr. Robertson, that, as you're probably aware, the schools are presently in the process of doing their annual HIB evaluation, you know, which I will be reviewing as well, by which they take a look at their data and try and trend out. So that is something we will do, and keep a close eye on.
Excellent. And Dr. Cascon, something I'd raised before is, it would be great for the board to get formal HIB training as well, because we're addressing reports and hearings and all those things all the time, and it's good to be clear on what's HIB versus code of conduct and that type of training. Some of us have had that over the years, but together it would be a good idea.
Absolutely. And having been the anti-bullying coordinator in my previous district, I could certainly offer that. If the board were looking for something more formalized, we could certainly arrange for that. Mr. Alper. But I'd be capable to do that if the board were.
That's awesome. That'd be great.
Comfortable with that, sure.
Great. Up next, questions from the public on agenda items. If anyone has any, you can come up to the microphone. You'll have three minutes. Give us your name and address, and you can speak to any item on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on. Second reading of some policies. Policy folk.
Sure. Hello, everyone. Myself and Ms. Triggs Scales are the policy chairs, policy committee members. Second reading today is the health and physical education policy. And the numbers are slightly different because we have a new policy vendor. So they're 2422 for health and physical ed, 5533 for student smoking, and 5533P for student smoking, APSSD, and 5533 for student smoking regulation. May I have a motion, please, for a second reading for board policies?
Make a motion.
As outlined.
I made a motion.
In a second. Thank you. Any discussion by the board, or any questions?
Yes. First of all, I just want to say, great job, and it's great to see the regulations along with the policies. So that's excellent. I do have a question, though, about how we're going to integrate the new codes with the new vendors with the existing coding system, and is there going to be a process to gradually re-code, or are we simply going to integrate as we update each policy?
We're doing it as we update each policy. If you notice, in the top right-hand corner of the policy, it says replaces 6142, replaces certified 15, and so on. So there will be a cross-reference to help everybody.
Okay. Excellent.
And we have prioritized with the vendor those policies that we want to move through more expeditiously. And I think, and Ms. Menendez will correct me if I'm wrong, but Governor Murphy has passed a bill that health and PE will be taught by certified health and PE teachers. And so that puts West Orange in very good stead as we move forward in providing health and PE to our youngsters. So, go West Orange.
I have a question for Dr. Cascon. Dr. Cascon, what are your views on, on how to communicate with the students and the employees about the smoking policy? I know you had some ideas when we met last week.
Sure. We had discussed the vaping seems to be kind of the more prevalent kind of form of smoking amongst young folks nowadays, and West Orange is, unfortunately, is not a lot different from, from many high schools in the state. It's really a statewide and a nationwide epidemic and problem. So I will be meeting with the high school principal, and ultimately, the SACs when they're back on staff, to kind of devise a cogent approach to any number of things, in terms of communicating to parents through newsletters, sharing resources with them, getting our, our student leaders involved, and creating some things we did in my previous district, we're creating public service announcements that are created by students for students. I think the most important thing is to recognize and identify it as a issue, as something we need to address aggressively, and then put together a team of folks who are going to kind of put, you know, put out a plan and implement that plan. So absolutely, is something that we're working on, or going to be working on. I think at the end of the day, listen, it's a complex issue, and there's no panacea to it, because it's multifaceted. But at the end of the day, as a school district, we have to be able to feel as if we've done everything we, we can do on our end to combat that. And, you know, having just gotten here, I'll have to assess that, but I want to be able to get up in front of you at the next meeting or the meeting after that and say, you know, we have an aggressive plan, and we're doing everything we can.
Great. Just to add on to that, we recently resurrected our health and wellness committee, so maybe this is something that that committee can also work on as a part of health.
That's a great idea.
Right. And Mr. Alper, I just wanted to backtrack to the fact that we are now putting in regulations with each policy, and so that the public understands exactly what that means. Policy is our job as the Board of Ed. The regulations is how at each, through each policy, how the policy is implemented. We're the what. The regulation is the how. And so that's extremely important for building administrators and, and staff, is how we do business. And heretofore, we've not had regulations for all of our policies. And so as we move forward, we will ensure that as we approve a policy, we have a attached regulation.
That's great.
Yes, that's great.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay. Up next, personnel. May I have a motion for personnel items one through nine?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
Sure. We have some retirements. Want to congratulate certainly Sharon Englem and Ronald Brandt for their retirements, as well as, we have a 39, that's, each were 15 years, one 16 years, 15 years. And then we have a 39-year retiree, Joseph Rinaldi, at Edison, custodian, and that's 39 years. My gosh, that's a lot of time. We appreciate his service. And we're also saying goodbye to somebody who's a key cog in all that happens at this high school, Debbie Zarro.
Yep.
An amazing, amazing, oh my gosh, we're going to miss her. She's part of making everything happen, and she's been absolutely just fantastic. But she's going to take something, she's taking a job closer to home, but we just want to say, we will miss her so much.
Absolutely. Anyone further?
Yes, I want to add my congratulations to Debbie Zarro as a drama mom. I mean, nobody on the board currently has students in drama, but she was very instrumental. You do now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. She's very instrumental. She plays an integral role in, in the drama department. Also, she is a longtime PTA mom, council PTA, you know, president, everything, so she's all of that. She has done tremendous community service and tremendous parent involvement over the years. So, going to miss her, but wish her well. Her husband already retired, so we'll miss them both.
All right. Okay. Mr. Calabano? Mrs. Merk-
I have a question, sorry. New staff orientation, we have a number of new staff members coming. What's the date of that orientation? Do we know that?
New staff orientation is the last week of August, and we have it Monday through Thursday. All new staff goes through the summer institute, and then throughout the year, they meet once a month.
Okay. And just a parallel question about second-year teachers. Do they come in during the summer for?
They do not come in during the summer, but during the year, they also have, once a month, and they're in year two, which is technology-focused.
I have one more. I know during our workshop sessions, I had asked, and actually during the budget period, other board members had asked for a, an accounting of all the clubs. From time to time, we ask the number of students in each club. Obviously, if it's an anime club or it's a chess club, there are two or three students or six students. But for the clubs that have few students, I know generally, we take a look at it to make sure that it's viable and it's working, and we were promised a report from the high school as to what, what clubs are pilots and what are at no cost versus what's getting charged. So I would like to table that until we get the report from the high school. I mean, these all look pretty great, but I just want to make sure that it's meeting the needs of all our students. I know kids have asked for various things from, I know, I've asked for ping pong about 15, 20 years ago, but I don't know if, if this meets the needs of everyone. From time to time, we have students come and attend a meeting with, a petition with 200 or 300 signatures. So, of course, it's the summer, so they're not able to do that, but I'd like to get a report from the high school as to how they came about this list.
Yeah.
So this would be the numbers where they ended last year?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we've asked about that before. It's a good point, Ms. Mordecai.
Yeah, we, we asked about it during the budget period as well, because this does add up.
Yep.
Because the advisors, you know, it can, it can get up there.
Does every club have a paid advisor? Every club?
Pretty much, every single club.
Every single club has somebody who's got a stipend or?
But typically, the pilot clubs are no cost the first year, and then they assess it, and then the second and third year, then there's a cost. But that's not indicated here. What's brand-new, what's a pilot, what should be at no cost?
There's a couple of them that are indicated as new.
There's two at the very top.
Yeah, at the very top.
Is that a feasible ask during the summer? I'm just, I don't want to run into a situation where, come September 4th, there's no clubs.
Well, we ask during budget season, so.
Right, I'm saying, but now that we're, but now that we're asking at the end of July, is it achievable?
I think that there's time to certainly answer some of the board's questions. I can't, I can't guarantee that, that we'll have all the answers, because, you know, we have a, we will indeed need to have these approved in advance of September.
Yes.
And we have a couple of weeks until the August meeting. And so what I might do is, I might follow up with board members and get specific, some specific requests and specific questions to which you're looking for answers, and then go about, you know, getting that information. So at least, we have some of those answers.
Yeah.
And I think that that's fair. You know, it's admittedly something that I was just in receipt of recently, so I have no problem in the next several weeks doing some, some inquiries and gathering what information and questions you may have about that.
And Dr. Cascon, to Ms. Mordecai's point, and understanding that you just received this too, right? The big question really has to do with the level of participation. There were some times in past years where we looked at it, there may be four kids at a particular club, and we start to wonder, is, should that club still exist, while another club may have 20, or 30, or 40? Or something like the Unity Club, we know is massive every year. So it helps us to look at, from a physically responsible standpoint, but also understanding, since this is summer, the high school may already have some of this information summarized. Middle schools, I don't worry about as much, because their clubs tend to be much more, they're fewer, and they're more focused in general. But the high school has a rich offering of club opportunities. That's very positive, one of the best co-curricular offerings, I think, anywhere. But if we could just get an idea, based upon what numbers are available on, on participation, that's really the, that's really what we're looking for. If whatever's available, without holding anything up.
I think that, I think that's fair, in recognizing that there's, it's a, it's a multi, multifaceted, you know, kind of matter, right?
Yes.
And that, and a matter that has evolved over time, and may require some time to completely correct. But, that being said, certainly, we have several weeks to exercise some additional due diligence and to get you the answer to some questions you might have.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
So then we have a motion on the floor to table 3A, 3ABD?
3A, the high school ones, attachment two, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I'm not worried about the middle school.
I would like to have a middle school, elementary tool as well.
You would like that too?
So A, B, and D.
So three.
A, B, and D?
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Oh, right, because C is team leader's got you.
Yeah, team, team leaders.
I'll second, son.
Team leaders, that's it.
I moved it, sorry.
Do I have a second, table 3ABD?
Yes, second.
Full in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's table. Are you ready to vote on the?
Rest of it?
Rest of it, yep.
I believe so.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Next up, curriculum and instruction. May I have a motion for items one through seven?
So moved.
Second.
No.
No, you go.
Discussion.
Yes. For the field trips, I, I just want to make sure that there's equity across the school district. I note that in Roosevelt Middle School, there is an explorers' club, which looks great. I don't know if Liberty has one. I just want to make sure that the schools are getting the same across the board. I've gotten comments from time to time, why some school districts, why some schools get to go to visit the mayor and some don't. So I just want to make sure everyone's getting an equal opportunity for a, an educational visit.
So from what I understand, it's based on the school's principal and the PTA's involvement with that school, on what the school tracks.
I was just using that as an example.
Yeah, no, so I'm just saying, so I think, you know, it's something we can look into, but at the same time, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it falls on the principals of each of the schools on what the field trips are, what's approved, what parents want their kids involved, who wants to go where, and that the schools themselves have every opportunity to change or add on field trips. And I think as a board, we've pretty much approved every field trip, so I don't see why there would be any concern over, you know, I know that there's been some discussions in the community about Roosevelt goes to Washington, Liberty goes to Philadelphia, but from what I understand, that that's a principal and PTA's choice, and that no child is permitted, or not permitted, to go on a trip because of cost, that the principals work very diligently to help all families across the board. So I don't think it's fair to say there's inequality. I think it's just a matter of preference and what principals want to have.
I'm just saying to make sure there's equity. I'm not.
Okay.
I think both of you are right.
Just make sure there's equity, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I think, I think both of you are right. To Cheryl's point, sorry, go ahead.
If there's folks at a school that aren't going to the, you know, that aren't, I know Gregory does the mayor as a third-grade trip, you know, if there's schools that wish they were doing that, they should put in for it, because I don't see why they wouldn't be able to, especially a trip like that where there's, you know, $20 for a bus. I'm exaggerating, you know what I mean?
I think both Ms. Merklinger and Ms. Mordecai have legitimate points. It is true that it's largely driven by the principal's decision that what the PTA lobbies for wants to support, and the principal ultimately makes the call. Ms. Mordecai, though, also has a legitimate point in that there have been questions that have come up at, at the middle schools before about equity and ensuring that if there's a financial gap, that all kids can attend a trip. And there's also been questions asked about, are there potential efficiencies to look at in coordination between schools? Years ago, Liberty and Roosevelt were more aligned in terms of how they did their trips, even did the Philadelphia trip one point together. But there were individual decisions made about how extravagant a trip would be, or how far the people wanted to go. So, I mean, everyone's envious of the Roosevelt DC trip, but there is a principal and PTA that's involved in that decision.
So I will tell you that back when we had Edison and Roosevelt as the only two middle schools, us, our sixth graders, we, as the entire sixth grade community, we went to Philadelphia together. In seventh grade, we all went to Baltimore together, and then in eighth grade, we all went to Washington DC. We all went to the same museums, we all went to the same dinners. I'm not sure where along the lines that changed, but I think, again, it comes down to what the schools want to do and what the principals feel comfortable with, and how much involvement your PTA has. So I would highly encourage our PTAs to get more involved, parents to get involved with making sure that, you know, our kids are getting to have these opportunities, especially something like, as simple as going to visit the mayor. I mean, that's.
Right. Can I just ask, I'm sorry, can I just ask a clarifying question? So we're discussing field trips that are, that are typically funded by outside sources, whether they be the students themselves, parents, not, not, not district-funded trips, correct?
Districts also.
Districts as well.
Both, some are, some are. I'm a combination.
It's a combination.
I, I think, you know, I think one of the, one of the interventions for that and kind of working towards equity, without homogenizing the experience, right? Because, you know, right? It's a big district, you know, a lot of schools, and so you have to strike that balance between consistency, you know, and, and autonomy, right? But I think that the curriculum is, is a, is a good solution to that, in that, you know, that we are, because we don't often build field trips into the curriculum themselves. They're not usually explicitly written in and thought about in terms of, okay, we're going to do a field trip here to reinforce this standard or this, or this core subjective. And I think when it's built into the curriculum, then it eliminates some of that, that difference, and it validates best practice, right? So if a school, Gregory School's doing a great trip to reinforce, you know, civics, well then, you know what? Let's replicate that and have all the schools go for that particular unit to the mayor's office for that unit on civics. And so I think curriculum can be very helpful in that regard when we're building field trips into the curriculum itself.
That's a great idea, because that could, for instance, like in, you know, Amistad's relationship to a DC African, African-American museum trip. So, yeah, that's, that's fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Cascon.
Thank you.
Just, yes, and that's, that's wonderful, because that's that equity piece. And just wondering, do all of our students go to the Edison Museum? Is that part of our curriculum?
As far as I know.
At some particular grade level? Okay. In my prior life, field trips were built in to the curriculum, and one of the units was, well, for the sake of Montclair, my hometown, that was a course of study. And so all of the students in a particular grade level went on those field trips related to the hometown. So that might be something that we could certainly look into. I would support that. We also, I, I have a question about the cost of field trips when we're talking about equity. Is there a limit? We have board policy as, as to a limit, what we can charge students for a field trip?
If any may be able to answer that now?
To my knowledge, there's no policy on that.
We don't have a limit, and it's not tied to the policy, but that's a great idea.
No, it's not at all. That's a great idea.
I would suggest that we look at that as well.
Yeah, I would caution against putting a limit on what parents are willing to offer. And I know.
Well, then you get into where you don't have equity, because if, if you set a limit and say the field trip shouldn't cost more than $15 a-
and say the field trip shouldn't cost more than $15 or $25, then when you've got a PTA who is in a better position to fund a trip or supplement a trip, then some students are getting a different experience than others. And that's something we need to caution against.
We also have to keep in mind that the principals and the PTAs work to ensure that every student that wants to go on those trips is given the opportunity and somehow works it out.
But that's not what I'm saying. I'm talking about the difference among the seven schools. That's the equity issue, not the equality, but the equity.
Like a Redwood versus a Washington, and economics versus the trip.
Right, but again, it comes down to what the schools want to do. I mean, we can definitely have conversations about this further, but I think, I want to, I'm hesitant to say that it's not equal amongst the schools, when it's a matter of what principals want to put forth, and what parents are willing to also put forth.
Yeah, I, I think that this is, and shortly we'll be getting together, I think it's next, either later this week or next week, to kind of reignite, or continue the work of the diversity committee. Now, when we talk about diversity, diversity has many forms, and, and one of those forms is, is socioeconomic diversity, right? And so what we're hitting upon here is a very complex issue, right? And, and so, understanding the extent to which it's an issue, how we might address the issue, right? So if this is something, and it sounds to be, and it arguably should be, a focus, and something the board would be interested in us exploring, you know, then we can do that, right? And it can be part of an ongoing kind of strategic effort to understand it, and then kind of report on it, and maybe propose solutions to it. So then we can have kind of more, kind of informed conversations about it. But I think it's great feedback, and it's something, you know, we can, we can address, you know, on that idea of equity, as, as it relates to diversity as well. So perhaps we can continue the conversation at the diversity meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There's just one other comment, not related to that, but on the same section. Our Avid program, item number six, is an absolutely superb program. It also offers elements that I think we should explore, looking at, to reach, to serve all kids. I'll give it, for instance, their college tour is very expensive, very extensive, and they also teach, they've integrated the Cornell method of note-taking, which used to be more widely taught, and is not widely taught throughout classes. There's a lot of elements in terms of preparedness for college and career that they include, that are not incorporated into other curricula, or were at some time and have dropped out, like the Cornell note-taking method. So I'd just like to explore, there's actually some school systems that talk about, quote, "how to avidize a school system," which I'm not necessarily recommending, but I'm looking at, how can we take the best practices that can help to benefit all children in their preparedness, and replicate those? And I just think we should take a look at some of the elements of the Avid program.
Yeah, it's, it's funny you mention that, Mr. Robertson, because, you know, that's act, that has come up a couple times, not the least of which is part of our agenda review. And I think Mr. Mendez and I are, you know, are kind of on the same page, that we want to kind of really take a look at that, not the least of which, because it's a program that's been in place for some time, and it's just good practice to be circling back to our programming and evaluating it to determine, you know, is, do we keep it in place? Can we make it more robust? So duly noted, and we'll be looking into it.
Thank you. And just so we're clear, it's how do we take the elements that are in the program?
Correct.
And make them available to other kids who aren't in the program?
Correct. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay, up next, finance. We have a motion for special services, items one through nine, and business office, numbers one through 19.
I'll motion.
May we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, please. I have a couple of questions. I, I, I have an issue with the bubble project, as I've been talking about for some time now. When we first started this project, it was at 500,000, and now it's close to a million. So I'm, I'm very hesitant to see, you know, here's another change order. Wow. And I, I know that you've explained that it's not more money, that it's a contract issue, but the point is, that we've gone from 500,000 to almost a million in the bubble, and it's a year and a half late, a year and a half overdue. So I would like to make sure that the board gets to take a tour of the bubble as it exists now, before we vote on this. So I'd like to table number three.
That's not new money, and I believe they're supposed to start painting tomorrow. I don't want to do anything.
If we want to get this bubble completed.
Well, we have a meeting August 12th. The bubble, I'm getting feedback from a lot of parents that are going into the bubble, including a former board member, but as, as well, other parents, that there, there are things in the bubble that they thought should have happened and didn't. For instance, there might be a coach's office that's not there. The girls' locker room is very large, and I'm, I'm a girl, so I'm very supportive, but there, it's also about equity and fairness as well, even in the locker room. And I just want to make sure that everything is on track, and that the plans that we approved is what exactly is happening in the bubble. We've had so, so much change in the administration, of course, Dr. Kasko, you weren't here, but there's been so much change that every, every other agenda, there's something about the bubble. And as a football parent, I mean, my kid played three sports at the high school, so as an athletic parent as well, I hate to table this, but I think we must. I, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I hesitate to vote on this tonight.
I will tell you that I was in the bubble when they moved in some of the weight equipment pre, or I should say, early, because we wanted our football team to be able to start working out and lifting. Some of the flooring was damaged. So from what I understand, that that now has to be replaced. As far as I know, none of the offices, no offices were not, none of the offices were removed. We did make them smaller when we did the plans, because we wanted to lengthen the track area that we were putting in. So last I heard, there wasn't any other changes to the specifications of the offices or the locker room. We had all agreed on a previous meeting months ago, that we were going to do that, so that we could allow the track team to have that track area to practice in, within the bubble. So I don't know if something's changed since then, but I'm looking at John, and I don't see anything's changed.
Not to my knowledge, not at all.
So if people are coming in and looking, you know, haven't seen, because we made those plans a few months ago this year, this board, so if people from former administrations are seeing it, it's almost certainly different than what they approved, because when they approved it, you know, we were still under the impression that the company that originally presented to us was certified to construct in the state of New Jersey, and that's how we got off of $500,000 in the first place.
But it's almost double. And actually, this is the first I'm hearing, that the flooring is damaged. So thanks for letting me know that, Ms. Merklinger, but I wasn't aware, as a board member either, that the flooring in the bubble is damaged.
The main portion of this flooring cost is for that track, that we don't have flooring for. So that's, that's what most of this cost is.
Okay.
To Ms. Mordecai's point, here's the thing, here's the thing. You know, we've suffered through the complete mismanagement of the bubble for a year and a half. We now, we could have built a building for the amount of money that we've spent on the bubble at this point, a permanent bill.
No, we couldn't have, which is why we didn't.
Yes, we could have. Yes, we could have. I'm sorry, if we can't build a building on that small site for under $1 million, we should just resign. You know, it's been, there's been cost overruns, there's been time overruns, there've been incidents that happened where equipment was left out, and damage that we then had to replace. There's been mistake after mistake after mistake. Here's what I suggest. Because we've already had so many delays, and we need to get our, not only our football team in there, but every team's supposed to be able to have access.
They're already in there.
Oh, they're already in, okay, great.
They're already in there.
And we need to make sure that the track's going to be fine for the track team. I'd say, I would suggest that we move ahead in approving it, but that we set up a walkthrough for the board, so the board can be more on top of it, because this has been mismanaged for so long, in so many different ways.
One, just a, kind of a, a suggestion, and ultimately, I will defer to the will of the board. That's why you have me, right?
That's right.
So, you know, you all folks are volunteers, you have, I'm happy to take an inventory of perceived and/or real concerns, and to conduct a walkthrough with Mr. Calavano, Mr. Ziggy, Mr. Bligh, and then report back to you through Board President as to my findings.
I think that, first of all, we're, we're so thankful that you're on board. I do personally also want to see it, as a sports guy. It's not, I trust you completely, and I'm so happy that you're at the helm. I'm trying to contain myself. But I do also want to take a walkthrough.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? Since it's probably be very difficult to get all board members together at the same time, we can arrange with Mr. Bligh for, for you to set up, you know, meetings with him at your mutual convenience to see the building.
And that'd be great. If we could pass out again, the most recent version
Sure.
of what we approved, in terms of the change in the floor plan, because at this point, I have a file of floor plans, and changes, and changes of changes. It's, it's, feels like that.
It's a few plans.
It's quite a few.
Yeah, just want to make sure that what's been done.
But I appreciate that. That's great.
Was approved.
Okay, so Mr. Calavano's making note of that, and?
Okay, then I'm fine.
Okay, very good.
Any further discussion?
I was going to say, you know, if, any board members that have, you know, Ms. Mordecai or any of the board members who have issues that want explored, you can just email me, and I'll make sure that we put those in together, a list. And when I do my walkthrough with Mr. Calavano, Mr. Ziggy, and Mr. Bligh, that's what we'll put a critical eye on. And then, of course, any board members that want to tour the facility on their own time, we advise Mr. Bligh that, you know, you might be reaching out to him to do that. Is that good?
Yeah.
That sounds wonderful.
And I just have one question.
I have a couple more.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, Sandra, if you stop.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm sorry, I have a couple more. Item number 11, Mathfessel and Werble. We approved a not-to-exceed contract last year for 150,000, and this year, it's 162. I know we negotiated down our rate with Jacoby's firm.
Yep.
Can we go back to Mathfessel and Werble?
This 162 is for last year. It's not for the upcoming year.
This is for last year?
Yes, we just received the final June billings, and exceeded the budget, or exceeded the not-to-exceed figure of 150.
Then how did it exceed the not-to-exceed figure?
Can you?
Because it's a guesstimate that we do in the middle year. We have no idea how much litigation we're going to be in with special ed, or any other litigation. So we come up with a guesstimate, and then we track it, and then we got to a point where it's the end of June, final bills came in, and we're over by $22,000.
Can you appeal to them to, to give us a discount on their overhead costs, whatever that is?
$12,000.
No, on their overhead, I mean, so I know.
No, you're over by $12,000.
I know, I'm saying, my firm.
It's 12 grand, yeah.
No, talk about the overhead. For instance, my law firm charges for phone calls and whatever, and if a situation like this occurs, at some point, they can offer you, say, okay, we'll waive the overhead costs, photocopying or phone call expenses, or whatever.
So would you mind leaving the resolution as is, and I'll try to negotiate it down?
Okay.
That would be wonderful, because my idea of a not-to-exceed limit is not to exceed the limit. And that means that you make your services, and your costs fit within that, and if you go over, you eat it.
But it's our number that we come up with not-to-exceed, not theirs.
It's, what's in the contract?
There's no, the contract is based, there's no not-to-exceed in the contract, it's based on rate.
Okay, then maybe we need to revisit the contract.
Or alter our language.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that's true. Okay, then I'm fine, I'm fine with that, if you'll go back into that. The next item, item number 13, I would like to table, I looked through my notes, and I didn't find where the board approved an RFP to go out for food services.
So it's, it's the state that mandates us every five years to go out to bid. So the last time we went out to bid was five years ago. At that point, it was an issue, because there was no, no competition. So we had to go out this year for the five-year, I mean, this is our five-year limit. We went out to bid, and going through the criteria, the panel of three, Macho became the responsible bidder. If we table this, and Macho does, if we decide that we're going to put Macho back on August 12th, it's going to be very difficult for a new company to come in, in a matter of weeks, to get schools started for September.
Hey, I'm, I'm fine with your response that it's state mandated, but it would have been great to advise the board prior to this, because I had no idea.
I'm sure five years ago, we didn't, we didn't inform the board either, because it was just something that we just do every, every five years.
I think it might be good if there were, like, a procedure where anytime an RFP goes out, or maybe if, if there's enough, maybe it's like bi-weekly or something, that there's just like a little email update.
So let the board know.
So that we're not, just so we're not caught by surprise, when people say, hey, what's this RFP you heard about, or what happened?
Actually, this is not a new topic. We did discuss this a while back, under a different board.
Going out for an RFP for Sedexo?
Not for Sedexo, no, 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 no.
I'm talking about Sedexo.
I'm talking about the process of making sure that the board is informed of RFPs that are going out. Because, no, we did not discuss Sedexo, we weren't aware of it. I understand it's routine, in terms of the five years, but for something that's such a major vendor, that's serving all of our kids, all of our buildings, all of our events, this is something the board should be informed.
All of the board of all the RFPs and all bids that we go from here on. With the previous board, it wasn't informing the board, it was putting it on our website. So we do list all the RFPs and all the bids on our website, but from this point on, and I'll be sending an email tomorrow, because we just put out the copier bid for the district. So that's something that we had to do at this time of the year.
Thank you.
So we'll just keep you informed of all the RFPs and bids.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and I'd be interested in seeing the copier bid. I know we had a copier vendor contract a few years ago that we were not pleased with. So would love to see that.
What would you like to see? Oh, copier?
The copier, yes. I'd like to see that.
You'd like to see the RFP?
Yes.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that we get the responses, because we weren't happy. If, I don't know if you remember, a few years ago, the last copier contract we did, there was a whole bunch of problems with the copier machines.
Numerous.
And the service calls, everything. There's a lot of problems.
Yep.
Just want to make sure. We're paying for a service, we should get. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have anything else? On finance?
Yes, I have one more. Thank you for reminding me. The same is true for the buses. I, thank you for reminding, Mr. Alper, you know I had a lot of questions. Several years ago, we outsourced our busing, and I know over the past few years, we've started to buy back buses, and we're up to 25. I don't remember us approving the purchase of five buses for this budget. We might have approved it for two years ago budget.
This previous budget, this is for four buses, two 54-passengers, one 24, and one wheelchair. In our budget presentation, we indicated we were going to lease two large buses and two vans.
Okay, but I thought.
So it is in the budget.
I thought we cut that, okay.
No, that was not cut.
Okay. There are a lot of cuts we, we did in the budget process. I thought that was one of them. Thank you.
All right. Further discussion? You had a question?
Yeah, I, not really a question, but just more of a clarification. If you could explain why we, as the public school, have to approve the non-public state aid, just for clarification for the community.
Good point.
So for the non-public schools, they receive a per-pupil allocation for technology, textbooks, nursing, and security. It runs through the local school district. So when they want to, we give them the allocation and the guidelines. When they would like to purchase any items, it goes through our purchase order system, it gets delivered to us, we stamp it, "Property of West Orange," and then we send it over to the non-public schools. If a non-public school closed, those textbooks are our property, so we would receive them back from the non-publics. But it has to run through our accounting system. It takes our staff additional time during the summer to stamp these textbooks, to place the textbooks orders, to check them in, and then have them delivered to the non-public. But any funds that are not used, they have to be returned to the state. We cannot use any of those funds.
Thank you.
Mr. Calavano, I also have an extension for, I'm being reimbursed, reimbursed for travel expenses for various courses.
Got it.
On the bills list. I'd like to abstain from that. And I do have a list of names as well to abstain from. So I'll send you the list of names?
Please.
Or I can read them now?
You can read them, but you should read them for the public.
Okay, I sure will.
But, you know, send them to me.
Okay, Linda Ayan.
So do you want to do, I'll do the vote call?
Sure.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes, but abstaining from purchase order for reimbursement of travel expenses for various work courses and also abstaining from payments to Linda Ayan, Robin Ince, Kim Lemon, Fabu, Fatu and Baye, Marsha McPherson-Gunnings, Moses Scott, Colette Pierre, Imani Randolph, Robin Sorbino, Claudia Woodard, and that's it. As they may have contributed to my campaign over the years, I want to make sure there's no conflict. Thank you.
And President Alpert?
Yes. All right, reports, items one through two, may I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I missed a second.
I'm second.
All right, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alpert?
Yes. All right, up next, petitions and hearings of citizens, if you'd like to come up and speak on any topic at all, you'll have three minutes at the microphone, just give us your name and address.
Good evening, everybody, board members. My name is Benjamin Hughes and I'm in West Orange, 5 Spring Hill Drive. I'm just commenting on the retirement of Ronald Brandt. He was my chemistry teacher and my AP chemistry teacher from 2010 to 2011 and he was a, a great man, a great teacher, tied in a lot of outside knowledge from his numerous occupations prior to being a teacher and it made something that is hard for anybody to grasp, let alone a sophomore in high school, way more palpable and interesting and it was just great to have him as a teacher for, for those two years and, you know, I just want to congratulate him on his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Maritza Brown, 5 Linden Court, West Orange, New Jersey, and I'm actually here to welcome the new superintendent, Cascom, and I also want to make a mention to the board that I did send out an email, Ms. Alpert, I, I was surprised that I didn't hear back from you, but your vice president was on cue and she actually put me in touch with the superintendent. I know all our schedules are really tight, so what I thought I would do real quick is just give you an update, I'll just hand this out, so I don't have to speak through it, but the main purpose for tonight is just to show appreciation from our organization to this group and to the new superintendent. Thank you for attending the award ceremony, keep in mind that Essex County is our pilot, so what we do here is our model moving out forward to the rest of New Jersey and then nationally, so the rules are relaxed because our intent is to attract the teams and going forward, the vision is that the school will elect a team that meets the requirements, but for now it's the pilot and I'm here to just show appreciation, okay, from the organization. Welcome again, you are just awesome from what I have observed, so if you sustain that, I am sure that this educational system will benefit significantly from you. Thanks for joining.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jason Lamont Jackson, Sr., 34 Sunnyside Road. First, I just want to start by, you know, I, I don't envy any of the positions that you have and hold, but I do understand that you're here and you've run with the, the kids' best interest. I wanted to attend the meeting on June 17th, we were just coming back from Nationals and I was still kind of very frustrated and disappointed at how the entire thing was handled. I do want to start with some good news, you know, we went to Nationals, we had 12 underclassmen, which hopefully means they'll all return next year, we had a freshman in the shot put Olivia Prescott that took fifth, so she was a freshman All-American and a junior, Karen O'Dunamay who took second in the Hammer, which means she's also a junior underclassman. I want to publicly thank Mayor Parisi and 89 community members who, when we found out that we weren't going to be able to go or the trip wasn't going to be funded, were able to pull the funds together and we would have had to charge each student, I found out 12 days before Nationals, we would have had to charge each student $780 and we only ended up having to ask them for $180, which was amazing. So thank you to Mayor Parisi as well as the 89 community members, some were anonymous, some of their names were there, but I'm just truly grateful for that. What I think happened, and I don't know because I'm not behind closed doors, is that the board, you allowed someone to tie your hands and making a decision that wasn't made the year before, wasn't made the year before that, and I can't speak before that because I've only been here two years. It was just very disheartening, you know, I found out on the 31st that it wasn't going to be funded, we just started our booster club, which is a whole nother issue and there was monies being thrown around thinking that we had a certain amount that we were able to pay for, where we ended up spending about $8,000 on uniforms, hurdles, some other stuff, and so it was just very disheartening. I know that I'm running out of time, I do want to thank, you know, Mr. Calavano that was able to sit down with myself, my booster club and AD Bly, but on April 10th, and I, and I need someone on the board, one or two people on the board, on April 10th, I sent an email to my school principal about just a litany of things that I was not pleased with on the athletic director's part, he immediately sat down with me, the union rep and the AD, some promises were made that there was going to be some transparency, that we were going to be able to talk and nothing happened and then all of a sudden, the term illegal to go to Nationals comes up and I'm trying not to get emotional because it was so frustrating that the same athletic director went last year with us and then went the year before that when I wasn't here, but all of a sudden it's illegal to go and these kids almost didn't go. We have a booster club now, we understand it won't be funded, so we can start in September raising funds and so I understand that, but it put a sour taste in my mouth that these kids almost didn't, they weren't able to go and for us to go to the mayor and the community members, it looked like we didn't have our act together asking for money, so that was very, very frustrating.
Thank you. Anyone further for public comment?
Joy Burnett, 63 Pilat Place, and I'm actually coming, I came in on the discussion on equity, equity of field trips, as a parent of Hazel students, a teacher who has taught at Washington, Redwood and Gregory, the experiences that children have are not equitable, the children are not having the same experiences and I, I was pleased to hear the discussion was taking place because it really can't be based on what the parents can do, that is what makes it inequitable, because parents in one neighborhood certainly, yeah, they want to provide things for their children, but they don't have the means to provide those things for the children, so that's where equity comes in. It can't be equitable if you, I want to do it, but parents in certain areas don't have the connection to the finances, the, the ability that parents have in other areas. So, you know, our neighborhoods are very different, our schools are very different and the children do have a different experience, you know, even when the kids come together in say Roosevelt and Liberty, some of the experiences are different, there's fundraising available for trips, but a person who works in a corporate office and a person who works in a hourly job, they each still have a different availability of raising funds because of what their station is in life, so it becomes still inequitable because that parent doesn't have the ability to do what that other parent has, some parents can just write a check and then some parents still have more people to fundraise with and then some parents just don't have any options of what they can do for their children. So I think it really, I was pleased to hear that that is a discussion because, you know, you, because I've been in those buildings and I've seen that it's a different experience that the children get just based on who their parents are and is it really fair, is that what we really want for our kids to have a different experience because of, you know, where their parents are? I would think we want them all to be able to experience all of the wonderful things that another child can, so I, I think it's a good discussion to be had. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Tinycliff, 8 Hartshorn Terrace, I also want to piggyback on to what she said in the discussion about equity and the student field trips. I am the PTA president at Liberty, I've been the PTA president at Kelly and I was the councilor PTA president as well here in the district. I want to clear up something Ms. Merklinger said about the PTAs being involved in these fundraising for the field trips. It is not always the case that the PTAs are involved, in fact, in Liberty, our principal told us last year when we brought to him the inequitable way these field trips are being run and how much they cost, he said it's too much. So just as a note, this is an academic exercise and I'm talking specifically now about the eighth grade field trips at Liberty and at Roosevelt. Based on say 500 kids per class, the Roosevelt field trip would cost $137,000 for 500 kids. We know that only half of those students attend. The Liberty trip, because it's only one night, costs $112,000. These are not amounts that, as the other speaker had said, many parents can pay, it's $550 for the trip at Roosevelt, that's burdened by the parents, it's $450 at Liberty. No PTA can raise this kind of money. We're told, you know, we can help, we can reduce the cost, we can buy into it, but I don't know any PTA in this district that's raising that kind of money for field trips. We can easily help with the Edison field trip and we've always done so because it's $60, it's something that we can do. There's a pervasive inequitable way that this district is, you know, and up the hill, down the hill is the term and it really is not equitable the way it is, we have a huge socioeconomic difference here in our district. Public education is supposed to be an equalizer and here in this district, it is not because of things like this and this is just one example. As PTA president makes me sick because I'm here as a PTA president because I want to make sure all of our kids get the same, it's something one of our student board members had mentioned earlier this year when she said, oh, I didn't realize that other kids got all these trips and there's some that didn't have it, that's unacceptable in our district, we know we have this issue, we need to address it, I'm glad there's a diversity committee, I'm glad we're talking about this, I just wanted to add to that, so thank you for your time.
Anyone further? All right, seeing no one, Dr. Cascom, respond to anything you'd like.
Yeah, so, you know, very, thank you to the community members for some very, just kind of passionate articulate comments. So in listening to the challenges that West Orange faces, you know, they're, they're really no different than the challenges that have been faced on a larger level for generations and, you know, and, and had, and we've kind of gone down a certain path as a country in trying to kind of establish that equity. I think that there's a glass half full, you know, kind of perspective here, which is because of the fact that we haven't necessarily embarked on a solution to it here yet, is almost a blessing, is almost a benefit, because we have the opportunity to, if we as a community, okay, have a fidelity to wanting to really establish equity, okay, we have an opportunity to do something really wonderful and so I think it's important when we have these conversations to not necessarily kind of come from a, you know, come a finger pointing or a critical nature, because I don't think there's anyone here in the community that's saying like, well, I'm glad I'm here and I'm glad you're there and you stay there and I'll stay here, right? I think it's a matter of what are we going to do to come together as a community to bridge that gap and to establish equity, right? We need only acknowledge that it is a collective value of ours as a community to do that, okay, and then figure out what that happy medium is. Now, it's complicated because, you know, we don't want to steal from Peter to pay Paul from the standpoint of, you know, you know, depriving other individuals to give to other individuals so that we're all even, but it's a, when you talk about these field trips, it's a matter of that all kids are getting a trip that they can feel good about, that they can be proud of and that is going to be a great experience for them, that doesn't set up a disadvantage for either of them and that's really what it's about, right? Coming in the middle and meeting a compromise. So we need only come together and acknowledge that equity is something we believe in and that we want as a community and then work towards establishing it.
All right, let's see, Mr. Hughes, thank you, Ms. Brown, thank you for all you do, Mr. Jackson, thank you for what you had to say tonight. You know, on the field trip topic, I would say, you know, I think personally the challenge isn't for us to take traditions and trips away from our students, the challenge to us is to help all of our schools build traditions and trips that they, their students want to participate in and that work in all the communities. You know, it, it's not the case that less than half of Roosevelt kids go on the DC trip, last year it was about three quarters from what Mr. Hush told Roosevelt parents in a PTA meeting, so, you know, if it's the case that fewer than half are going at Liberty, then, you know, I think the challenge as a community is to come up with a trip that works, whether, you know, I dare say, you know, I know Mr. Hush is very motivated to help kids at Roosevelt who can't make the trip, to find ways that every kid who wants to go can go. I think, and I don't want to sound anti Philadelphia here in general, but, you know, it is what it is, I wouldn't be that excited about a trip to Philadelphia myself, I wouldn't be asking my parents, you know, I wouldn't be pushing, I don't know, I, I don't think it's the same, I think it makes a lot of sense that back in the, back in, sorry to offend, like I'm saying, you know, that back in the older days that it was a eighth grade trip to Washington and both schools went, I think that makes a lot more sense, I think Washington is a, it's a desirable, aspirational, right? It's an aspirational after eight years of civics, exactly, it's somewhere, and Philadelphia has, it's got its pieces of history as well and not to, you know, make fun of them for other reasons, sorry.
No, Philadelphia was fun.
But you see my point, right? You aspire, you want to go see DC, you want to go see the Capitol. So, you know, I'd like to see, you know, that we challenge ourselves to, you know, make sure that, you know, and in the elementaries, if, you know, I know some schools Gregory for a long time has gone to Trenton as a fourth grade trip and if that's not possible in every school, I'd like to, I'd like us to find ways for that to be possible, you know, Trenton's, it's not an overnight, it's not nearly as expensive as, you know, going to DC, you know, for seven schools to go to Trenton in fourth grade, if that's, you know, that's curriculum because fourth grade's the state history year, I'd love to see that, so I think that's where I am on that. And closing out the public comment, reports from board members.
Mr. Alpert, if I may?
Yeah, you can start.
I'm going to encourage you to try visiting Philly. I, I love Franklin Museum.
It's not as bad as I'm making fun of, it's fine.
I love the Touch Museum, I love the Franklin Institute, I love the Flower Show, there's a laundry list. I love going all through Philly and looking at the murals and if you can, go in December when they have the Mummers Parade, not to be missed, so go see Philly, city of brotherly love.
Fair enough, I've been, I'm really just picking on it a little bit, it's completely not fair. All right.
A pretty vibrant city and you must have a cheesesteak.
Well, that goes without saying, that they've done right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. Again, just want to welcome Dr. Cascom, so excited that this is his first meeting and we're off to a phenomenal start, I think the excitement fills the air. And we have a new staff member that Dr. Cascom asked me to introduce and that's Ms. Beatrice Harity, who is our new K5 ELA supervisor and so stand up and?
Welcome aboard.
Welcome and she comes to us most directly from Mount Olive as a reading specialist and literacy coach and so we really welcome you and look forward to having you join the West Orange family.
All right, Mr. Robertson?
Sure, first, just want to make sure, parents, are you checking your emails? Ms. The, our Director of Technology, Phil, has sent out? Our director of technology, Phil, has sent out emails asking you to provide feedback on the website development committee, and we want parents to provide feedback on how we can improve our website, as we're going to redesign it to make it easier to search, make it more aesthetically beautiful, make it more user-friendly, and try to make sure that the information that we're providing is the information that you need the most. So please look for that email and please respond to the survey. Your feedback is critical. There are some parents on the committee, one of whom's with Audible and highly knowledgeable, but we need to hear from our day-to-day users and what your experience is and what you need. So please respond to that. Also, I'm just very happy about the conversations that we're having on equity, and I want to thank you, thank you all for coming up, Jennifer and Joy, to the mic and speaking from your experiences, which really makes it tangible, that this is real and these are things we need to address. And I want to thank Dr. Cascom so much for kind of putting in perspective and saying, "Hey, if this is, these are common values that we share, let's do something about it. This is an opportunity." It is a glass half-full, because now that we realize this, this is kind of a challenge, okay, to say, "Hey, let's step up." And I agree with this job. I'm sorry, I have nothing against Philly, I love Philly, but it's no D.C. Not that, yeah, I'm from D.C., so I'm a little biased there, but, you know, we can find a way to provide equity. To Coach Jackson, I could hear the hurt and emotion in your voice, and I am so sorry about what you and the team went through, and we're very proud of the successes that are of our team and of our coaches at Nationals. What we were told, and I may be miseducated in this, and actually Ms. Merklinger may know better, you're much better in the NCAA stuff, is that when it came to Nationals, that from a board standpoint, we couldn't fund it. If that's incorrect, let me know. But what we can do, especially now that you've got your booster club organized, and I'm at your booster club president, and now that you've got wheels turning on it, let's see how we as board members can help you to build that momentum, starting in September, and help you to raise money and help you to get the support that you need, now that you've raised our awareness about what the need is. And even the cost that you're able to lower to per child, to me, is still too much. And we can do more. And so I apologize if we dropped the ball or misinterpreted something. I want to be better educated on it. But if we could look at what are the actual NCAA rules in that regard to Nationals, because I've been told this twice, and I don't know if it's miseducation, and what can we then do as a board and as a district to help the track team gain momentum, starting early, starting in September, and working with the coaches, working with the booster club, to make this happen? And to make sure that our kids, without the burden, the financial burden, are getting the opportunities to really display their talents and that our coaches, who work so hard all the time and they're committed, are getting the support that they need. I want to thank you for what you do.
If I may add to that, Mr. Robertson, this is the first year that we were told similar, that it's against the rules. But if it's possible for them to move the competition up, because we were told that it's after the season and so it cannot be funded through the Board of Ed. So we have to double-check that. And it's possible that New Balance isn't aware of that rule. Otherwise, they would have more, you know, more competitors. I know one year, we combined with, I believe East Orange or Orange, we chartered a bus together with them, and so we were able to cut the cost one year that way. So maybe there's something to look at there for September, for next year, for next year, April, actually.
And we can help raise money. We can leverage our community connections.
Yes. But you know, I'm a track and field girl, so I'm on it.
All right.
What's the NJSA deal, Chair?
So, the NJSA has a lot of rules about sanctioned and non-sanctioned New Jersey school events. So we actually cannot charter a bus with East Orange to go to a non-sanctioned event. What happens is that each sport is allowed, I believe it's one or two non-sanctioned events. So our cheerleaders go to Disney, our baseball team goes to Florida for spring break to travel and practice and play out-of-state schools. So in this case, my understanding is that the Penn Relays was the non-sanctioned event that the track team attended. I could be wrong on that.
No, that's sanctioned. It's definitely sanctioned.
Not by NJSA. Not by NJSA. It has to be sanctioned by the NJSA, Pennsylvania. Penn Relays are Pennsylvania. So, like I said, I could be wrong on that, but my understanding was that, so the NJSA rules are that you can only go to one non-sanctioned event without being fined or whatever sanctions held against you. The concern was that if we did fund the track team going, that the students may be ineligible to participate in the following year if we were fined by the NJSA. So it wasn't, from what I understand, purely speaking from my own understanding of it, is that we didn't want the NJSA to come back and potentially fine us and then our students not be eligible for the following 2019, 2020 school year. So again, I, look, I'm a track person, I ran track, I ran track in college, so I completely understand. So I think there's just more of a planning perspective, and now that you have the booster club, just like the cheerleading football, baseball, everyone, I think it's just something that we need to work with the athletic director on, ensuring that our booster clubs understand, our coaches understand what we're potentially allowed to do and not allowed to do, and then have a better plan for the upcoming seasons.
And we can support it.
And absolutely support it.
I know that it's your time, but I would really love to, and I know there's four, five of you, they need two of you, along with the business administrator and the athletic director, to step down. Because what you're all saying has a little bit of weight to it, but then what happened last year, and the athletic director went, why didn't it be a four?
We'll revisit this with you.
We can't do back and forth because you're not on the mic, so it's not recorded, but essentially, he's asking if maybe two board members with the BA and maybe the athletic director can like put something together so we can figure out what's what.
Yeah, just, you know, as soon as I heard Coach come up and speak and was listening to his words, just from the perspective of a newcomer who's kind of coming in and hearing about something that took place that clearly created some angst and some bad feelings and some worry, you know, my immediate thought was, "I want to understand it." You know, I want to, I want to go back, circle back, talk to all folks who were involved and get a clear understanding of what took place and get a definitive ruling as to what the reality, the legal reality is and was, and how the decision was made. Once we know that, and yes, I would agree with Ms. Merklinger, then it becomes really a planning perspective, saying, "Okay, folks, this is definitively the truth. This is it. And as a result of that, considering that we have talented kids and probably we're going to go to Nationals every year, we have to have kind of a consistent contingency plan in place." So I promise you, Coach, board, you know, I'm going to learn from my colleagues that kind of managed this situation previously and so that we can report back and specifically on the parameters and the reality of it. You have my word on that, Coach.
Yeah, so just a few other updates. So I want to thank all of our alumni and our current students who are sending in their posts on Instagram and responding to all of our interactive Snapchats and items like that on social media and keep it coming. We'd love to hear what our students are doing this summer. The football team is having a fish fry next Friday, so I would encourage everyone to come out to support the football booster club. There's also going to be, they're bringing back the West Orange Carnival. The cheerleading and booster, the cheerleading booster club and the football booster club are joining together to bring Carnival. So that should be fun and exciting. It's going to be on the Conforty Field. For those who don't know, that's not any of the turf areas, that's the grass area. So there's going to be rides and things like that, from what I understand, so it should be really fun. I believe bracelets are on sale at the moment. It's August, I want to say 14th or the 18th, it's a few days. And I believe we open up, football opens up with a scrimmage August 23rd. And if anyone else has updates, please send them our way, keep them coming. We'd love to hear what everyone's doing.
When is the fish fry? You said next Friday?
Friday, the 26th. This Friday, I'm sorry, this Friday, the 26th. My apologies, my weeks are jumbling on to each other.
Do you have a report about the football team? They won the Bergen County scrimmage, shouldn't they?
So there was a seven-on-seven tournament that the high school team participated in, and they did win that, so congratulations. I believe it's the first time that we've participated and we won it. So we've got a lot of talented football players. I know a lot of them have come through the PAL organization, so shout out to Shakai and Jared and, oh my gosh, Amir.
And the coach.
There's just so many.
Carson, yeah.
And our coaches. Yes, and our coaches as well.
All right. Our next board meeting will be right here on August 12th. See you then. Have a good night, everyone. Motion adjourned.
I'll make a motion.